Oh yeah. December 16th, meeting of Topeka County Planning Committee Board. We can push in and go in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Uh, I'm part of our responsibility to...
I can't hear you.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I love everybody. It's a great showing and as part of our responsibility to interact with the public on any of our hearings tonight, I have a feeling we're really going to interact tonight. In some ways, I think you might even be saying correct. We had some big crowds for, uh, Palm Springs, uh, Blue Mountain Penhills, when they scanned in a number of years ago. Uh, we had a big crowd down there. One evening in the boardroom not too long ago, but I think this was the big place you came to.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Well, anyway, thank you. Now, uh, our chairman, remember John Latori, he is on the speakerphone. Uh, he's out of town or probably been working out for some time, but he is here. Uh, his voice is at his bar. Uh, I think that's off the podium there is, um, the main event. That's the reason you're here is the main event. Uh, well, he does shortly, but before that, we have some commission business to take care of and, uh, as soon as that's over with, this business, we will get into why you're...
All here tonight. So having said that, um, oh, by the way, when you speak and come up to the podium, do not pass the podium like you're going to come up here and punch one of us or something because there's a bunch of wires right there and we don't want any casualties tonight if we could possibly avoid it. Okay. Having said that, we will get on with our commission business. The first item, any staff reports or reports from the commissioners. Ms. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd just like to mention that, uh, we may have one item for your first meeting in January. Uh, the deadline for, uh, getting that to you will be next week. So, uh, again, we expect an applicant to complete reviewing their, uh, conditions. So we've sent them and if that's the case, we will have a meeting on the first week of January. That's all I have to report this evening.
That it?
That's all the night.
Thank you. Any reports from, uh, any of the commissioners? Okay. Seeing none. Any report from the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative?
Yeah, we have not had a meeting, so, uh, that's...
A good report.
In that, in that...
Okay. Report from the Ag Advisory Committee Representative, which happens to be me and we have not met either, so that's fine. And our four, on number four, our other commission business, uh, minutes of the meeting of November 4th, 2015. May I have a motion to adopt or correct? Motion second, favor by, uh, roll call. With the speaker, we haven't had a roll call. Finishing overall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner By.
Uh, Commissioner Baker.
Abstaining, I would answer.
Abstaining.
Uh, Commissioner, Chairman Plan.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Fraser.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Mosley.
Aye.
And Commissioner Presibella.
Aye.
And so that motion does, to me, Commissioner Latori.
Aye.
He said aye.
He, he did say aye. I could hear him from here. Uh, okay. So the motion did pass, uh, six, zero, one, and that would be Commissioner, Vice Chairman, excuse me, Baker abstaining.
All right. That matter is settled. Okay. Let's see, our next, uh, item of business, public comment. Anybody is welcome to address the commission on any item that's not on the agenda. Any item that's not on the agenda, you can address the commission, uh, using the microphone. We've got a long night, so keep it brief.
I'm gonna take this opportunity...
Is that mic on?
Is that on?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Yeah. There we go.
I'm gonna take this opportunity to address, uh, what scattering of government officials we got around here about this sulfur cyanide that's coming up from the valley. I've been following that for, for 10 years and it's killing trees up here on, uh, Canterbury Hill where I live. I could give you a complete catalog of it. Killed 25 trees there and, uh, it's, and, and trying to trace that back down. Of course, I've got 30 years' experience with sulfur cyanide and tracing that back down, I found out that, that all your state officials are completely, uh, faded away from the issue of, of, uh, this is where it's coming from, Monsanto, UC Davis, and Big A. They've just shut their mouth. I can't get anybody to walk 200 feet up there and look at everything.
Uh, Bruce, wind it up because this really is nothing this commission can deal with. So we appreciate your comments, but could you wind it up?
Why, okay. I wanna know, uh, any good excuse why you guys can't walk 200 feet and look at the scientific evidence. You know, it boils down to dendropanis brebicomas and the insect gallery pattern it puts on the cambium layer. And you guys can't move and not only that, nobody in the whole mother lode can move.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to address the commission on any item not on the agenda? Uh, okay. Seeing none, we'll close that session and we will go now to the main event, having to do with the Dollar General issue. Uh, a few upfront things. First, there are a few seats up here. Now, this is gonna be probably a long evening, so those of you standing, it would like to fill in, well, we don't have a lot of seats, but we got a few. There's one there. There are several seats around, but your choice, if you prefer to stand, fine. Um, let's see, the first thing we better do is, uh, make disclosures by the commissioners on any discussions they've had and so on on this issue. Uh, I will start it out. I did attend a, uh, Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee meeting several months ago. There was a spokesperson there, uh, regarding the, uh, Dollar General issue. I also received one phone call. I wasn't home, but my wife took it and I received two letters, uh, regarding the issue. That's my disclosure. Charlotte?
Um, I too have received, um, two letters and, um, which community developed, uh, development answer, uh, on my behalf and I also received two telephone calls. Um, the only other thing that I might disclose is I have lived in Columbia, in Gold Springs, for a period of about 15 years and served prior on the Columbia Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy?
I too attended the Governmental Affairs Committee meeting and listened to the...
I'm gonna talk real close on that one.
I thought I was. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I too attended the Governmental Affairs Committee at the Chamber of Commerce for Topeka County. Uh, I heard the discussion. I've received letters. I have received information through the newspaper and I should also mention that I am the very proud owner of an 1849 endobee building in Groveland. So history is very near dear to my heart.
You know, Cole?
I received two letters in the mail. I did get an email. I got a call from, I believe Claudia, who owns Claws. Sharon Maravich stopped by my office. I've had two people stop by today when I wasn't in the office and I did have a meeting with Ron Koff.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, I received several, uh, several calls. I don't know if I could actually put a number against it and a few letters, uh, and I did, uh, visit the site, uh, recent days to...
All right. Thank you. Peter?
Uh, yes, I received the same letters. I believe all the other commissioners did. Also received a few phone calls at home and one email. All of those were transmitted to staff from Community Resources. Uh, I also did visit the site and have made a journey into the Salisburyville Dollar General just to see what one looks like, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Is there any conflict of interest?
Pardon me?
Is there any conflict of interest? What can I name?
If, if we had a conflict of interest, we would declare it, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, I have one other I forgot to mention. I did do a site visit as well.
Okay.
And to that...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Latori may want to report on his communications.
Okay. I'm sorry. John? You got any?
Chair, I have been working at Petaluma full-time for the last year, so I've been pretty much out of the loop and I have not communicated with anyone about this project.
Thank you. That should cover it. Okay, uh, couple of things. Uh, you'll notice that we have a, we've joined the 21st century, if you will. We have an electronic scoreboard there as far as the time limits are concerned, so I think that's probably an upgrade. Um, uh, let's see, uh, okay. Just so everybody understands the procedures, we did have a session on this a month ago adopting the procedures for this area, but to make sure everybody understands the procedures, uh, I'll go quickly over them. Uh, I've opened the public hearing and I will provide 15 minutes for the staff to make their report on this project. There will be time for the commissioners to ask questions of staff. Then we will get into the formal public hearing process. Proponents of the project will present their arguments and evidence first. Secondly, the opponents will present their arguments and evidence. Thirdly, neutral parties may then speak, take neither for nor against. Then we get into rebuttal by proponents and surrebuttal by opponents. To qualify rebuttal or surrebuttal, you must have spoken originally in, in the hearing. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Um, the commissioners may ask questions of any speaker. You are not required to sign in. You can if you wish, but you don't have to. Keep that clear. Uh, following the, uh, end of the public hearing, uh, the hearing will be closed and then this commission will deliberate on, uh, the project and at some point reach a decision. Those are the procedures. I think, uh, pretty much everybody is familiar with them. So with that, I open the public hearing. This is a matter of Dollar General and I'll turn to staff for a, uh, staff report on the project. And don't fall over the wires.
This is why I have to move John on.
Okay. Move John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Bev Shane, uh, Community Resources Agency Director for the county. The project before you this evening is a relatively simple one. CDDG Columbia LLC would like to construct a retail commercial building on a 1.4 acre parcel that is located at 22345 Parrot's Ferry Road in, here in Columbia. The parcel is located on the southeast corner in the intersection of Hauser Lane and Parrot's Ferry Road. The property is owned by siblings Soraya, Ames Kida, and Soraya. The application entails a site development permit for the construction of a 9,100 square foot commercial building. The developers would like to have a 32 square foot monument sign on the property that would be five foot tall and 40 space parking lot. The tenant that is proposed to be located within this new commercial building is Dollar General. Dollar General is a variety store and as you're aware, they have constructed two stores in Topeka County at this time. There is one in Jamestown, which came before your planning commission and was approved by your commission, and also one in Mona Vista, which your commission also reviewed some time ago. Those are both constructed and open for business. The Topeka County zoning ordinance establishes standards for signage for commercial businesses. In addition, section 1762060L of the ordinance code allows any property owner to apply for signs that may be different from what are in the zoning ordinance. In this case, the developer has submitted an application for a conditional use permit which would allow them to have two attached signs on the building. Each of the signs would be 97.5 square feet and there would also be the detached monument sign. The total square footage of the sign is 230 square feet. Again, the zoning ordinance provides for that type of proposal through the conditional use permit process. As I mentioned, uh, the project site is 1.4 acres. It is currently zoned C1DMXAIR. So what do all those initials mean? Well, C1 is general commercial and it means exactly that. There are a large variety of commercial uses that are what we call permitted or allowed by right. It doesn't require a use permit. It's allowed to be there. I want to make it very clear that a retail commercial building such as proposed is a permitted use. It is allowed to be there. However, in Topeka County, we do have provisions for reviewing the design of a building and the layout on the site of a commercial development through a discretionary entitlement we call a site development permit. So although this is a permitted use, it is still subject to a discretionary review by your planning commission. Your commission is a decision-making body on a site development permit. You are also the decision-making body on the conditional use permit for the signage. So that is your role is that you are often a recommending body, but tonight you are a decision-making body on these two entitlements. You're also, uh, as part of the site development permit, will be looking at the standards provided in the county ordinance code. The purpose of a site development permit is to ensure that certain types of developments will serve to achieve a design which is desirable, uh, for new commercial development. And you are required, if you decide to support this project, to find that under the circumstances of the particular case, meaning on this particular site, the proposed development will not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use and you must also find that the project is consistent with the Topeka County general plan. As you know, uh, in addition to, as part of the Topeka County general plan, we have several community plans. Columbia is one of the communities that has such a plan and so when you are reviewing this project, you're not looking at only the general plan policies. You're also looking at the specific policies and programs that are unique to Columbia. This is also in the design review area and again, the zoning is C1D. The D means design review. Design review is specifically addressed in the county zoning ordinance. Uh, under those provisions, a project must be in conformance with a design guide that has been adopted for a community. In the case of Columbia, we have the Columbia design guidelines. Uh, these have been adopted by the Topeka County Board of Supervisors. They were prepared by the, uh, former Columbia Area Planning Commission and those are currently in effect. So again, the D, part of the zoning requires you as planning commissioners to evaluate whether or not the design of this project is in conformance or consistent within, with those design guidelines. And as you know, uh, the design guide is just that. It is not intended to set specific standards. It is a guideline for you to be able to look at and say, is it in conformance? Is it consistent? Doesn't mean it has to meet every single picture or description in that design guide. It's, that is what we call a guide. So I just keep that in mind. The MX part of the zoning means mobile homes excluded. Uh, so that's pretty clear. You cannot put a mobile home on this property. And then finally, the AIR is the Airport Combining Zoning. This property is located within the influence area of the Columbia Airport. In this particular case, it is in the zone, what we call Zone D of the Columbia Airport. The Zone D is the least restrictive of the airport's compatibility zones and within that zone, this project has been determined to be consistent with the Airport Landings Compatibility Plan and there are conditions that have been proposed for this project to make it conform to those requirements for the compatibility plan, which include addressing glare from development and, um, the height of the buildings, that type of thing. So those have been incorporated into the proposed conditions of the project. So that's the zoning of the project. The process we go through for discretionary entitlements such as the site development permit and the conditional use permit is that we do early consultation. We notify adjoining property owners. We notify advisory agencies. We notify people who've expressed an interest in a particular community and have asked to be contacted. Through the early consultation process, we received many, many comments on this project. Those comments have been addressed through the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration, which is before your commission this evening. The mitigated negative declaration was prepared and then the draft was provided, published for public review, uh, for 30 days and that public review period closed on September 18th of this year. Uh, we received 130 comments, letters commenting on the negative declaration. Uh, we have responded to all of those comments. Those are within your agenda package this evening and that's again, part of the California Environmental Equality Act process is that your commission is required in addition to looking at whether or not this project's consistent with the general plan, the Columbia Community Plan, the Columbia Design Guidelines, and the Airport Landings Compatibility Plan. You also have to make sure that it's consistent and, uh, been covered by the California Environmental Equality Act. And you must determine that you have considered those comments. So again, we provided those comments to you, uh, in a response to comments document. The other item that is part of your agenda this evening is an indemnification agreement. And what that is, is an agreement between the county and the developer that holds the developer responsible in the event that there is a legal challenge to this project in the event that it is approved. Uh, it is on your agenda and, uh, because your decision, although you're the decision-making body on this project, is subject to appeal to the Topeka County Board of Supervisors. And it would be the Board of Supervisors on the appeal that would actually enter into the agreement. So it is on your, part of your, uh, project description and, uh, we are asking that you, if you did support the project, that you would also support that agreement as well. But, um, your decision this evening, again, may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. I want the public to understand it's a 10-day appeal period. So when the commission does make a decision, either to approve the project, conditionally approve the project, or deny the project, there is a 10-day period in which you may file an appeal with the Board of Supervisors. Uh, there is a fee for that. I believe it's approximately $150 now for an appeal fee, just so everyone's aware of that. I just wanted to summarize, uh, for a moment, some of the issues that were brought up during early consultation and were brought up again, uh, through the review of the negative declaration. Um, they really can be categorized into several sub-groupings. Obviously, the design. The original design, the project, we heard during early consultation, was that it was just a box store. Uh, the developers got copies of all those comments. They, uh, certainly worked with staff and they did a significant remodel or redesign of the project and I think you'll hear more from the applicant about the design. Uh, they do have a, a board, um, that's on the easel over there, so you, everyone can take a look at it. But that was not the original design. Uh, you know, again, they have made a series of changes, uh, to the design of the building. Uh, other comments were about the signage and again, they have asked for a total of 230 square feet of signage, meaning the comments were that's too much. Uh, so the signs are too big, the signs are too bright, the colors are not compatible with the design guide. So those are issues about the signage. Uh, major concern has been about the traffic. Uh, this particular intersection is, um, a little more challenging than most in the county and it has been studied as part of the Columbia circulation plan. There's a long-term goal of the county to do some, um, realignment of the intersection. That was studied through a traffic report that was prepared by Katie Anderson and Associates and was of course reviewed by the county's engineers. Duke York, the county's engineer, is with us this evening and I'll let him address questions you might have about the traffic issues. Another issue, uh, not necessarily about vehicle traffic, but about the conflict of people walking and because of the lack of pedestrian walkways, uh, in this particular area of Columbia. So that was another concern. The, uh, economic issues of this project, whether or not this would create competition for existing businesses in the, in the Columbia area. That is not an issue that we look at under the California Environmental Equality Act. That is not an issue that your commission gets involved with. You do not regulate competition. The Board of Supervisors has, uh, made it very clear over the years that they will look at the merits of a development project, but if it may, uh, compete with something else that already exists in the county, that is not an issue. That is up to, uh, the private sector, that's up to businesses to be competitive. And so that is not something they typically look at. The, the major, the overwhelming comment we received however, was that this project is not compatible with the historic community of Columbia. And you've all read the, uh, letters that we received, you saw the comments and again, that was, uh, by far the most common, uh, comment we received is that this project, the way it's been proposed, the way it's been designed, does not fit in with the, the scale and the historic motif of Columbia. And also because it is on, and the gateway to the Columbia State Historic Park, it is of special concern to the citizens of this area. Those are really my comments, uh, about the project. We did receive a couple of emails and a petition, uh, since the last two days. Uh, so I just want to mention those and they're not in your agenda package because we just received them. Uh, we received a, an email from Dominic Torsia and you were given copies this evening, the commissioners were, uh, and he is stating concerns about the project. He is definitely in opposition, uh, to the destruction of our family-owned and operated small local businesses and the historic value of Columbia. We also received a letter from Diane Magid and she has a very strong conviction that the ambiance of the... the ambiance of historic Columbia would be wretchedly diminished if the Dollar General Store is cited on Parrot's Ferry Road. We were given a copy of a letter to the editor that was published in the Union Democrat. I don't know who submitted it. It was written by, the letter itself, by Jane Howell. Again, it was published in the newspaper on December 10th, and again, it is in opposition to the project because it would destroy the historic values of Columbia. And this evening, we were handed a petition that states that Columbia is a one-of-a-kind historic destination, and that the Dollar General Store have the potential significantly and negatively impact integrity, character, rural feeling, local color, and tourist economy of Columbia State Park, the townsite of Columbia, its rural and geologic context, and the historic corridor, excuse me, of Parrot's Ferry Road. The petition was signed by 160 people. So again, we don't have a photocopy machine here, but if the commissioners would like to see it, I think you want to hand it to them. That would just be handed to staff this evening. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note two corrections in your staff report regarding, on page two, under the recommendation, number two at the very bottom of the page, it says, under the finding, excuse me, that, the finding for approval, it references Conditions 1 through 88, that should be 1 through 79. And then on, the other change was actually on the conditions themselves that are proposed on page 38 of your agenda package, and the monitoring provision says that it would be for Conditions 1 and 77 through 79. That should be 67 through 79, and we apologize for not catching those earlier. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll just note that the project planner, who devoted a significant amount of time to responding to all of these comments, Alex Gilbert is sitting next to me, and of course, I already mentioned that our county engineer, Duke York, is here, and we have Deputy County Counsel Carlin Rivdall is here as well to answer any legal questions you might have during the meeting this evening. And with that, we'll be happy to respond to your questions.
Any commissioner have a question of staff?
Yeah, along the lines of changing 1 through 79, on page three, under Condition 3, you have E twice. Should that be EF?
Oh, sorry. See, I didn't even catch that one. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff from the commission?
Commissioner Latore has some questions.
Okay, Commissioner Latore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have four questions for Director Shane, if I may. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Director Shane, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I heard you say that a retail commercial building is a permitted use of this site. How large of a building could be built without triggering a site development permit on this site?
We require either a site development permit, or if it is a project that can be exempt from CEQA, then, which is typically less than 10,000 square feet if there are no other environmental issues. In this case, even though this building is only 9,100 square feet, there were issues that, certainly traffic, community character, and in this case, too, cultural resource issues were brought to our attention. So those triggered an environmental review. But a smaller project might qualify for what we call a site review permit. In that case, it may be exempt from CEQA, but it still would have required a discretionary entitlement and would have come before your planning commission.
Thank you. My second question, on page 22 of their agenda report, and maybe you'd like to let me know when you're there.
Which page? Page 22.
Yes, we are on page 22.
Thank you. Item number 72 starts the amount of traffic associated with Dollar General, there's not sufficiently, etc. The last sentence of number 72, so the basic traffic study, the engineering division has determined that the developer will be required to pay a fair share of the cost of the realignment of Springfield Road. And then in 73, that cost is spelled out as $35,459. Continuing on page 23, with item 74, in the middle of 74, it says the project will be required to construct a concrete sidewalk across the entire frontage, and it goes on to say the cost of this sidewalk improvement can be used as a credit towards a portion of the project's traffic impact mitigation fees. Now, I was a little bit baffled by that because I don't understand the connection between the need for a sidewalk and the need for traffic impact mitigation fees. And just off the top of my head, the feeling I got was, well, first of all, I'm guessing that a sidewalk of this length will probably cost approximately $35,459, and that the county would not end up getting any traffic mitigation fees at all. And my question is, what's the relation between the requirement for a sidewalk and requirement to pay traffic mitigation fee? And if I could elaborate, when I read this, the thought occurred to me, well, since I don't see the connection between the sidewalk and mitigation fee, it feels to me the same as if someone had said, if you build an awning on your building, you can deduct that cost from the traffic mitigation fee.
There are actually two different fees we're referring to here. The fee, the fair share contribution for the realignment of the intersection with Springfield Road is a separate fee. That will be required as mitigation for this project. The county's traffic impact mitigation fee that applies to virtually all new development, a new house pays for it, you know, in new commercial development, new industrial development, all pay into that. That's adopted by ordinance code, and Chapter 3.54 of the county ordinance code establishes the fee schedule and also identifies the projects which qualify to be funded through that program. What the ordinance also says is if you make improvements on those roads, which the county would have spent the traffic fee money on, the developer does some of the work, they get a credit for it. And when we're talking about these roads, such as Parrot's Ferry Road, which is in the fee program, if they construct the sidewalks, the curb gutter sidewalk, and widen the road, then that's part of our Complete Streets Program, which the county would have had to pay for that, and the developer does the work, they can get credit towards the fee. So that's the connection because it's part of the Complete Street template.
I understand. Thank you. My next question is on page 46 of the agenda report.
Commissioner Latore is referring to page 46 of the agenda report. Okay, John, we're there.
About a third of the way down, there's a heading, "Economic," and...
Wait a minute. We're on 46, it's a map. Are you in the initial study, maybe?
I am.
Okay, so it's the initial study. Page 46. Okay, now we're on the right page.
So a third of the way down, there's a heading, "Economic." And it quotes a comment that we don't want more stores that threaten local business owners who serve our community. Now, that's a comment that we've heard many, many times in the letter writers, and the signers of the petition, and also from the agencies who have responded, most notably the State Park, California State Park, that there's a concern that if Dollar General opens a discount store here, that could cause other businesses in the park to go out of business. And I heard you say that the planning commission does not regulate competition. But what's not clear to me is what part competition should play in our deliberations? Now, as I was reading through the comments made by the letter writers and the responses given by the county, there was a repeated reference in the responses. To, response 13-1, which would be kind of hard to find, it's on page 63 of the responses. Basically, response 13-1 says the county cannot discriminate upon the type of ownership or management. In this, in the Section 15131 of CEQA, directs that economic benefits not be treated as significant effects on the environment. Now, I think I understand that. It's not an environmental effect, it's a possible financial effect, and you told us we're, I believe you told us we're not to consider the financial effects. And finally, it says, this project will be considered at a public hearing by the Tuolumne County Planning Commission, and these concerns can be expressed at that hearing. Now, I'm expecting to hear those concerns many times tonight. Can you elaborate for me on what weight we're allowed to give those concerns in our deliberations?
Your commission, you as individual commissioners, if you feel that that is an issue that you feel plays a role in this, and you can certainly consider it. What I've advised you is that the Board of Supervisors in the past has said that they, again, their role and the role of the planning commission is not to regulate competition. So, but again, if you, as an individual commissioner, if you feel that affects how, whether or not you can support this project, that would be up to you to determine as a component of your deliberation and your decision.
Thank you. And my final question is in the responses to comments, which the commissioners will find, follows a colored sheet of paper that divides the sections.
I'm sorry, John, we didn't catch that.
The final question is in the responses to comments section. And I was telling the other commissioners that they can find that section after a colored sheet of paper.
We didn't catch your last sentence.
Well, there's a colored sheet of paper that divides the sections.
Oh, the colored sheet of paper.
Yes. So following the colored sheet of paper, there's a section called responses to comments.
Yes.
And I'm looking at page 21 in that section.
Okay, 21, responses to comments, okay?
Thank you.
He said page 21 in the responses to comments.
So I'm looking at the fourth page of a letter from Jess Cooper, who is the District Superintendent of the Department of Parks and Recreation for California. And the paragraph that I'm looking at in the middle of the page is labeled on the right, 4-9.
Okay.
He says, finally, traffic and circulation and possible alternatives are inadequately studied, discussed, and analyzed. The suggestion of utilizing park property to realign the Springfield Road appears to have remained without the completion of a comprehensive intersection approval study and without consideration of the impacts to state park land or communicating with California State Parks. Could you, I looked through the entire project packet here, trying to find an answer to that comment, and the only answer I found, going forward to the answer for 4-9, the county says the full list of stakeholders can be found on page 2.4, and it includes Columbia State Park representatives. Is it true, as Mr. Cooper claims, that the state park was not contacted about this solution to a traffic problem?
My, what Commissioner Latore, if you didn't catch that saying, is whether or not the state park was involved in discussions about the realignment of Springfield Road. It was my understanding that as part of the Columbia Circulation Plan, that the park did participate in that plan, and I'm going to let Mr. York confirm that.
In 2010, there was the Columbia Circulation Plan prepared, and in that circulation plan, they specifically dealt with the issue of what everybody calls the Columbia Star Intersection, which is right there at Springfield Road, Parrot's Ferry Road, Hauser, and Airport. And that, when that plan was originally prepared, it involved all the stakeholders, including the Columbia State Historic Park, and they reviewed all of the documents that affected traffic and circulation. They reviewed it for consistency with the Columbia State Historic Park General Plan, and the stakeholders included representatives from the Columbia State Historic Park in 2010. The specific mitigation of proposing a Springfield Road to swing and intersect in line with the commercial driveway at R&amp;L Mini-Mart was spoken of in that document, identified in that document, and that was the basis for identifying it as a potential mitigation for concerns with that non-standard intersection.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Latore asking all more questions.
Okay, now, let's get on with the reason we're here. So I get some feeling, if you wish to speak this evening, or tomorrow evening for that matter, please raise your hands while I get some feel. Okay. Tonight's, folks. And as I said, three minutes each. Just let me say one thing, too. I urge you all to be respectful of each other. You're going to hear some things tonight that you may disagree with, but I don't think you can disagree with their right to say it. The only way this system works is people to be respectful and courteous of those who you may not exactly agree with, and I would appreciate that. Also, in your comments, please address the commission, not the audience. And with that, let us, we will start out, and the proponents of the project are able to speak first, and if they would like to come forward, why, now's the time to do it. Anybody wish to speak in favor? Are you speaking in favor?
I'm speaking about.
Bruce, yes.
Good news.
Bruce, you're going to get disruptive here pretty quick. Yes, sir, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just check, Commissioner Latore, can you hear okay now?
Well, it's Phil's phone. I'm trying to make it out and feeding someone.
Okay, can you, is it better now?
Well, I can hear you.
Okay. Because what we're doing, we've moved you to the podium so that you can hear the speaker. So when people do get up, I just ask you to be very considerate because this, we'll have to sit here so the Commissioner Latore can hear in this equi-room. So you're not going to have a lot of room here on the podium, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, do we need the lights dimmed or anything? Do we need the lights dimmed?
Yeah, Larry, can you get some lights over there?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you could turn some of the lights so people can see, and then when you spin turn back on, it'll help us. I need you to turn back.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Joe Dell with Cross Development. We're the developers of the project. And I just want to take this moment to thank the commission and chairman for coming out tonight. Appreciate your hearing, our permit for a conditional use permit and a site development permit for our proposed development. So in the three minutes that I have, I'd like to just kind of paint a picture of what our plans are. I've got a large storyboard on the left for everyone to see, but also gave out individual storyboards to the commission that they can look closer at. And I wanted to hit the four, I think, main points that Ms. Shane brought up in her presentation as far as opposition. I'll address three of them, and then my associate, Ken Anderson, our traffic engineer that we consulted with, will address the traffic and pedestrian portion of that. So the first, the first comment was design. And I would agree with what Ms. Shane said at the very beginning, is initially in our first conceptual design that we submitted to the county, it was way off base. It was just a box. Our consultants took a stab at what they thought was what was going to be needed in this area, and it was wrong. And through meeting with Alex and the county, through countless phone calls and meetings, and even a member of the community, two members of the community early on, taking their comments into consideration, we've arrived at the design that, in our opinion, and based on what we've worked with the county, fits very well within the design guidelines of Columbia as far as the look of the building with the very specific iron doors and, or faux iron doors and shutters, and use of red brick, full awnings, wood siding versus metal panels. So we've taken a painstaking effort to get to this design. And so I'd like for that to be noted. As far as not compatible with Columbia design, so I think the big thing here was, a big part of the opposition or the big part of the talk was the drive into the historic park. And I would tell you, if we were developing a piece of property on the north side of the park, driving in off the north side, 100%, I drove that nine miles on the way in today. There's not a single building, other than one storage facility, right outside the Columbia Town Center, that is built there. And it's one of the most beautiful drives I've driven. Where we're developing on the south side, it's a different story. It's by general plan, has multiple commercial properties in the general plan. So we'll run through a slideshow real quick. And in the 1.5, two miles from 49 to the State Park, there's no less than 18 different structures or anything going into the park. So I'm going to run through that real quick. And then at the end, I just would appreciate that you guys approved the conditional use permit and site development permit that we've submitted. We agreed to all the conditions of approval and open for any questions you might have.
I have questions.
Anybody else would like to speak in favor of the project?
The commissioner has a question on the phone.
Pardon me?
The commissioner on the phone has a question.
Oh, yeah, okay. Question from John Latoya. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have three questions, although I'm not, I don't know if you're the right one to answer them, but perhaps you can guide me to the one to answer these questions. The first one relates to the truck access for deliveries. Caltrans has not approved the parking lot for trucks, and I wonder how you're going to deal with that.
Okay, so I, this is a, I'm unsure of how to answer that question. Does Caltrans, and I'll have to refer to Ken Anderson, my consultant at Duke York, on that to answer that question. My understanding is Caltrans does not control parking lots on private property. The truck turn does work, the truck movement does work, per the movements that we've received. But I'll have Ken Anderson answer that question, if that's okay with you.
Well, in the agenda report, it says that the project has been conditioned to prohibit trucks for delivery until proof of a Caltrans terminal access is approved.
Here's Ken Anderson to answer that.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Ken Anderson with Katie Anderson and Associates. Our office is in Loomis. The Caltrans comment deals, am I close enough to the microphone that you can hear me?
I'm close to you.
Okay, I'll try. Okay, I'll coordinate this. Caltrans comment deals with surface transportation authorization, STA trucks, that's the 53-foot truck that Dollar General generally uses to haul to the site. They've noted that there isn't evidence on the route that would be taken to get here that that route is STA legal. Until such time as it's legal, Dollar General would not use those trucks to make those deliveries. If they want to use those trucks, a study would have to be done to identify the applicability of the route. It's not a site design issue, it's a route to the site issue.
Thank you, I understand. And perhaps you're the one to answer my next question.
Put the microphone down there. This is being awfully cumbersome, and I apologize to the crowd because this is very difficult to get this moving. What's your question, John?
My next question is about the decorative brackets. One of the conditions is that the awning is going to have decorative brackets, but in the picture, in the drawing, all I see looks like two-inch square steel tubes. And I don't consider that to be decorative brackets. And I wonder if someone from the applicant's side could elaborate on what makes them decorative.
Okay, so this is Joe again with Cross Development. So the brackets on the picture are not very easily seen. They, as decorative is concerned, we will work with the county planning staff on what detail of decoration they are going to require. It's, we can hone in on that during the building permit process if this is approved for the site development permit, conditional use permit.
That's great. And my final question is about the propane tank. There's a note in the agenda report that there's no propane tank shown on the plan. I don't wonder if you're going to use propane to heat the building?
No, this is an all-electric building. There will be no propane tank. He has no more questions. Any other questions?
All right, any questions of the commission? Peggy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a question regarding the...
Microphone.
There you go. A question regarding the 53-foot trucks. You indicated that until the STA is legal, they would not be using them. Does that mean there would be more than three deliveries a week to make up the difference in space?
That I don't know. The difference between a California legal truck and an STA truck is...
Forty-eight to fifty-three.
Forty-eight, thank you. Forty-eight to fifty-three. I guess conceivably, there could be one more truck in that time period, but I'm not privy to their operational information.
Okay, any other questions of the commissioners? If not, thank you. Your three minutes was up. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the project? Yes, sir.
For the record, Ken Anderson with Katie Anderson and Associates. I prepared the traffic study that was included in the staff report back in February. I'm a registered traffic and civil engineer in California with more than 35 years' experience doing this stuff.
Closeer to the mic.
Closer to the mic, thank you. The study looked at traffic operations, site distance, pedestrian access, the interaction of turn lanes in the tight area, and the whole issue of Springfield Road alignment. Briefly, we discovered that from a level-of-service standpoint, the intersections operate adequately today. In the future, regardless of whether Dollar General proceeds or not, the Springfield intersection will be a level-of-service problem and will need to be improved. We found that the most pressing current issue is the interaction between vehicles in the tightly spaced intersections. Currently, the width of the two-way left turn lane there is about 11 feet. The possibility of vehicles stopping to turn with, and not being fully in the lane, was an issue we raised. Dollar General, the store, typically generates 35 trips, 17 in, 18 out in the morning peak hour, 63 at 5:00 when people are going home. Half of that's in and out, about a car in every two minutes, a car out every two minutes in the peak hour. The project itself wouldn't change the level of service from a CEQA standpoint. It would exacerbate the problem we think is going to be there from a level of service in the long term at the Springfield intersection. The mitigation measures that have been adopted for the project include widening Parrot's Ferry Road, so the two-way left turn lane is wider so that you can make the turn and be out of traffic. They'll do standard frontage improvements to widen the road. They'll provide a sidewalk along the project. The project is also conditioned to make a fair share contribution to the Springfield Road realignment because that project isn't funded, is not yet in the fee program. They'll play, they'll also pay the standard county fees, and that was the topic about credits versus the sidewalk. I'll be available to answer any questions you might have subsequent to my presentation.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the project? Yes, sir.
I've, I've given this thing a lot of thought, and I hadn't, I never figured it out till just yesterday. So hopefully, I can alienate everybody in the room. And, but here's, here's the answer. In 1960, I hit the ground here, and I immediately started to improve it. And this was before the days of hoops. And there was about four years there before the hoops came in, where you could do things. So in 62, I was living in my house, and I never even heard about the Cuban Missile Crisis because I was so busy. Now, in those days, we had stores like Thurman's, the hardware store, and we had Mern Doors, then you go on out. We had LS Jones Lumber, where I bought some lumber back then. You run around, you come back to Hatler's. And I pointed out, I forgot, but you could get a building permit in 45 seconds, and it didn't cost a penny. And so I'd done that. Now, these days, I call it the days of hoops. I was talking to the ladies at the market down here, and they had to jump through hoops for three years before they could get that thing open. And they're both under delayed stress syndrome. I can, I can bring up some words like "state of California," and they immediately go into a reaction. Now, here's the point here. The, here's the point. We've got this thing so hooped down, there's no movement. There's, there's no young people in this audience that could even begin to think about what was normal back in '60. So here's, so the thing has gone to hoops, and with the hoops comes the chains. Now, we're talking, instead of Andy's Hardware, we've got Lowe's. And so these folks are just another chain coming in, and we'll chain all this thing up. Now, where's this thing going? Well, Tuolumne County is in a flattened mess, and it's going to get worse, and it's going to take 500 years before you're going to see any progress.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to, anybody else wish to speak in favor of the project? Please come forward. If you're in the back, come up ahead of time. Oh, yeah. Oh, this lady, she's, yeah, I see.